So I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Up Hathley Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Armitage Neil Andrew, Labour Party, eighty. Evans, Rihanna, the Conservative Party candidate, eight hundred and ten. Hodges Samantha Diane, Green Party, one hundred and ninety-nine. Sankey Julie Margaret, Liberal Democrats, nine hundred and seventy-nine. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than the voter was entitled to, five. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, thirteen. Total number of votes, two thousand and eighty-six. The total number of votes recorded represented fifty point zero five per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Julie Margaret Sankey is duly elected as a councillor for said ward.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Returning Officer and all the staff who've worked incredibly hard. Thank you for all the residents of Up Hathley. And a big thank you to all the Lib Dems for supporting me and encouraging me. So yeah, big thank you to everybody. Thank you.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Benhall and the Reddings Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Beeston Jonathan Edward, the Conservative Party candidate, seven hundred and sixty-eight. Carey Robin Frederick, Labour Party, sixty-two. Collins Michael John David, commonly known as Mike, Liberal Democrats, one thousand Field Sarah Jane, Green Party, one hundred and fifty-three. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter was entitled to, one. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, six. Total number of votes, two thousand and thirty-eight. The total number of votes recorded represents fifty-one point forty-four per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Michael John David Collins is duly elected as a councillor for said ward.
Wow, thanks very much. What a weird and difficult time we've all faced over the last eighteen months. So to come here, I've got to admit, I don't even know what day it is actually at the moment. It's been so hard the last two or three days. But I would like to thank the Returning Officer, all the staff in here this morning, the long, long day yesterday, and of course, the guys in the polling stations. It was Thursday, wasn't it? Yeah, on Thursday. So it's been a long, long journey. I would like to thank the Liberal Democrat team that have been working so hard for me. We've really stuck together. I'd especially like to thank Nigel Britta, my colleague in the ward. And well, fantastic. Thank you so much. I'm so honoured and proud to be able to represent the residents of Benhall and the Reddings for another three years. Thank you very much.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Charlton Kings Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Mason Lorraine Elizabeth, Green Party, two hundred and twenty-nine. McClosky Paul Gerrard, Liberal Democrats, one thousand and sixteen. Rees Ella Harriet, Labour Party, ninety-one. Wilson Jacob David Guy, commonly known as Jake, the Conservative Party candidate, eight hundred and fifty-two. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter was entitled to, one. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, thirty-three. Total number of votes, two thousand two hundred and twenty-two. The total number of votes recorded represented fifty point five per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Paul Gerrard McClosky is duly elected as a councillor for the said ward.
I'd just like to say a few words of thanks to the Returning Officer and all the people here who've put so much effort in. I'd also like to thank the amazing team of local volunteers I've got, an army really, of people who deliver leaflets, stuff envelopes, make phone calls. Without them, I wouldn't be here. And with that ado, it's time to move on to the next one. But just to say, I'm really delighted to have the opportunity to serve Charlton Kings residents again for another three years. Thank you.
I, Paul... Whoops. Put that back on. So I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the College Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Arnott Robert George, Labour Party, one hundred and eighteen. Johnson Elizabeth, Green Party, three hundred and seven. Morphling William Guy Rosewarne, Liberal Democrats, one thousand and twenty-seven. Newman Richard James, commonly known as Rich, the Conservative Party candidate, five hundred and sixty-three. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, fifty-one. The total number of votes was two thousand and sixty-six. The total number of votes recorded represented forty-six point eight per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said William Guy Rosewarne Morphling is duly elected as a councillor for the said ward.
I have to say, this is a totally overwhelming experience. Firstly, I'm overwhelmed that so many people within the College Ward are prepared to put their faith in me. I'm overwhelmed by the amount of support that I've had from my team, Marg, Andy, Paul and Garth, being particularly active in getting me to this position. And finally, and I think we should all be overwhelmed by this, is the demonstration of democracy that has gone on here over the last two days, and the hard work of the Returning Officer and all the staff here to make this a very transparent process. And I think we all benefit, and we should all feel overwhelmed by the valuable thing we have in this country, which is a democratic right to make decisions about our future. Thank you.
So I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Warden Hill Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Bell Rosemary Jacquin, commonly known as Roe, the Conservative Party candidate, eight hundred and sixty-eight. Bonsor Timothy Cosmo, Green Party, one hundred and sixty-four. Oliver Anthony Patrick, commonly known as Tony, Liberal Democrats, nine hundred and White Ian Hugh, Labour Party, seventy-five. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter was entitled to, three. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, twenty. Total number of votes, two thousand one hundred and eighteen. The total number of votes recorded represented forty-eight point six four per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Anthony Patrick Oliver is duly elected as a councillor for the said ward.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to thank the Returning Officer and all the staff here today for all their hard work. It is appreciated. I want to thank the people of Warden Hill for having the faith in me, and I look forward to serving them again for the next four years. And most of all, I'd like to thank my family and my team for all the work they've done to get me here. You don't win elections without a lot of help and a lot of support. So thanks to them all, and especially to Marg Surgner. And I'd just like to say a few words of thanks to Ian Dobie, who unfortunately lost his county council seat last night. But I wouldn't be here today without him. So thanks very much to everybody. Thank you.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Presbury Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Bassett Smith Ian Michael, People Against Bureaucracy Group, one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight. Beal Graham Anthony, Liberal Democrats, four hundred and forty-five. Davis Alan James, the Conservative Party candidate, six hundred and eighty-three. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter entitled to, one. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, fifteen. Total number of votes, two thousand two hundred and seventy-two. Total number of votes recorded represented forty-six point seven nine per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Ian Michael Bassett Smith is duly elected as a councillor for said ward. I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Lechampton Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Andrews Glenn Liberal Democrats, eight hundred and fifty-three. Frings Peter Robert, Green Party, five hundred and ninety-two. Nelson Margaret Emma Francis, the Conservative Party candidate, one thousand one hundred and The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter was entitled to, two. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, six. Total number of votes, two thousand five hundred and eighty-five. The total number of votes recorded represented fifty-eight point six eight per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Margaret Emma Francis Nelson is duly elected as a councillor for the said ward.
Second time in two days. Thank you all very much. Thank you to everyone involved in making this election happen, because it hasn't been easy, and we know that, and people have said that already. I want to thank the people of Lechampton for putting their trust in me, not just for the borough, but for the county as well. And I must say thank you to my husband Chris, who took the seat in Lechampton in 2014, held it for four years, and then Stephen Cook, who took over in 2018 and had held it for the last three. Without them, I wouldn't be standing here now, plus the wonderful team of deliverers we have across Lechampton. So thank you all, and I will serve you as well as I can, I promise. Thank you.
So I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Pitfield Ward of Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Farmer Julie Francis, Labour Party, one hundred and sixty-six. Fifield Stefan Alexander, the Conservative Party candidate, one thousand and thirty-eight. Potter PG Jason Edwin, Liberal Democrats, seven hundred and thirteen. Wossle Billy, Green Party, two hundred and thirty-one. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, seventeen. Total number of votes, two thousand one hundred and sixty-five. The total number of votes recorded represented forty-four point eight two per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Stefan Alexander Fifield is duly elected as a councillor for the said ward.
Again, I'd like to thank the Returning Officer and the staff today. I'm absolutely exhausted, so you must be as well. So thank you again for everything that you've done the last few days. I'd like to thank the people of Pitfield for lending me their support. I really do appreciate it. And I hope that the next four years will be very, very productive. I've invested many years to try and win this seat, and I hope that now I can actually deliver on the promises that I've made to them. So thank you again. And again, I'd like to thank my Conservative colleagues for all of their support over the last few years, and particularly to Mike Evans and John Ritchie, who first got me involved in the local party and have really supported me. So thank you.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Charlton Park Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Chaco Sarah Jane, Labour Party, seventy-five. Davis Philip Glynn Clayton, commonly known as Phil, the Conservative Party candidate, one thousand and three. Harvey Stephen Raymond, commonly known as Steve, Liberal Democrats, one thousand and Wallington Sharon Lorna, Green Party, one hundred and sixty-two. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter was entitled to, two. Writing or mark by which voter could be identified, one. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, fifteen. Total number of votes, two thousand three hundred and fifty. The total number of votes recorded represented fifty-eight point seven eight per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Stephen Raymond Harvey is duly elected as a councillor for the said ward.
Mr Returning Officer, thank you. And Paul Jones, thank you as well for thirty years of service to this town and the people. That's a good effort. Thank you so much to everybody here that's helped organise this election, and all of the helpers, all of the counters, because it's been a hard couple of days. And I'd like to thank the voters of Charlton Park Ward for having the faith and confidence to reelect me. And as Mayor-elect of Cheltenham for the municipal year 2021, and Chairman of the Council, I would like to issue this invitation to all of my new colleagues in the next civic year. Join me in signing the Joe Cox pledge for openness, honesty and transparency in politics. Let's please cut out the catfishing and let's cut out the gaslighting. Thank you very much.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Park Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Boyle Kevin Michael, Labour Party, one hundred and twelve. Harmon Timothy George, commonly known as Tim, the Conservative Party candidate, one thousand two hundred and ninety-two. Leggett Catherine Sunita Leon, Green Party, two hundred and seventeen. Telford Isaac Augustus, Liberal Democrats, nine hundred and eighty-three. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter was entitled to, three. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, eight. Total number of votes, two thousand six hundred and fifteen. The total number of votes recorded represented fifty-three point six seven per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Timothy George Harmon is duly elected as a councillor for the said ward.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you again all for the counters and all the staff that have worked so hard. I'm sure you're all looking to go home at some point, and I hope they'll let you do that when you can. Thank you once again. I'd like also to thank my opponent Isaac. It's his first election. I bumped into him the other night, the night before the polling day, and I said, whereas I couldn't exactly wish him luck, I hoped he'd find it an enjoyable experience. I hope he has done. I'm sure you'll be back again. But it is great to be re-elected for Park Ward, which is my home, where I've spent most of my life, so it really is where I come from. I just say a few things politically. Obviously, we're only halfway through the count, but I think there is definitely a wind of change blowing through Cheltenham's politics. I'm particularly delighted of our first gain with Stefan in Pitfield, who's worked so hard, and I look forward to working with him at both the Borough Council and the County Council. It is only a year to go to the next elections, and I believe that we've made some progress today from the Conservative side, and that we will make even more next year. Thank you.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Oakley Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Hardy Jake Michael Andrew, the Conservative Party candidate, four hundred and fourteen. Hay Rowena Mary, Liberal Democrats, five hundred and ninety-seven. Jarvis Michael Charles, commonly known as Mike, Labour Party, one hundred and twenty-two. West Stephen, Green Party, one hundred and seven. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter was entitled to, one. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, nine. Total number of votes, one thousand two hundred and fifty. The total number of votes recorded represented twenty-nine point two seven per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Rowena Mary Hay is duly elected as a councillor for said ward.
It doesn't seem to matter how many times you do this and you put yourself forward to be elected, it's still absolutely nerve-wracking. And my biggest thank you goes to all the people in Oakley Ward and Lynworth and Priors that have supported me over the years, and they've given me that mandate to come back again. Everybody thanks all of the officers and everybody here, but actually, I see that as it's Team Cheltenham doing what we do. And I'd just like to... Well, thank you.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the St Paul's Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Fox Roger Graham, the Conservative Party candidate, two hundred and twenty-seven. Joy Tabitha Alice, commonly known as Tabby, Green Party, two hundred and ninety-four. Lewis Alicia Chloe Marie, Liberal Democrats, four hundred and thirty-one. McDonald David Ian Charles, commonly known as Dor, People Against Bureaucracy Group, one hundred and seventy-nine. Syme Kenneth, Labour Party, one hundred and thirty-six. Waters Joseph Peter, commonly known as Joe, Trade Unionist and Socialist Coalition, nineteen. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Want of official mark, two. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, eleven. Total number of votes, one thousand two hundred and ninety-nine. The total number of votes recorded represented twenty-nine point one zero per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Alicia Chloe Marie Lewis is duly elected as a councillor for said ward.
This is, quite frankly, the greatest privilege I have ever been granted in my entire life. The people of St Paul's are the heart and soul of Cheltenham, and I could not be more grateful to have their trust and their support. I will work every single day that it takes to be worthy of that. Thank you to my team, thank you to our office, and thank you to the Batesford colleague anybody could ever ask for, my good friend and colleague, councillor Johnny Brownstein. Thank you.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Lansdown Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021, do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Bell Stephen Paul, Green Party, two hundred and thirty-nine. Seekham Digory Charles, the Conservative Party candidate, seven hundred and ninety-five. Syrat Duncan James, Labour Party, one hundred. Wheat Paul, Liberal Democrats, six hundred and twenty-seven. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, four. Total number of votes, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five. The total number of votes recorded represented forty-one point six one per cent of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Digory Charles Seekham is duly elected as a councillor for said ward.
It remains for me to thank everyone here who's endured two days, well, one and a half days of counting votes, and very well, they've done it too, and also the extra staff who are supervising and so on. I'll say no more. I just say that I look forward to entering my twenty-second year as councillor for Lansdown. Thank you.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the St Peters Ward... Peters Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021. Do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Harris Clive Robert, Labour Party, 153. Hazen Edward Wadde, the Conservative Party candidate, 493. Willingham David John, Liberal Democrats, 953. Wilson Karen, Green Party, 215. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Want of official mark, one. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, 19. Total number of votes, 1834. The total number of votes recorded represented 33.05% of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said David John Willingham is duly elected as a councillor for said ward.
Mr Returning Officer, I would again like to thank all of the staff working here and on the polling stations for their tireless efforts in difficult times. It is a huge honour and privilege to be re-elected to serve the people of St Peters Ward. Finally, I would like to thank my agent, Steve Jordan, and the whole Liberal Democrat team who have done so much to help me get elected. Thank you.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Swindon Village Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021. Do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Clark Peter Arthur Robert, Labour Party, 128. Fisher Bernard, commonly known as Bernie, Liberal Democrats, 740. McCardle Susan Jean, the Conservative Party candidate, 452. Saul Edward Non Bycroft, Green Party, 212. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter was entitled to, three. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, 21. Total number of votes, 1556. The total number of votes recorded represented 35.89% of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Bernard Fisher is duly elected as a councillor for said ward.
Thank you, Mr Returning Officer. Thank you to all the staff who've spent the last two days validating and counting votes. And thank you to all my colleagues and friends who've helped me in the campaign. And thank the electorate of Swindon Village who have supported me again. Thank you very much indeed. Cheers, mate.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the St Marx's Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021. Do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Clark David John, Green Party, 179. Farmer Michael Thomas, commonly known as Mike, Labour Party, 152. Forrest Jerome Eugene, the Conservative Party candidate, 467. Pinniger Richard James, Liberal Democrats, 736. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter was entitled to, three. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, 13. Total number of votes, 1550. The total number of votes recorded represented 32.38% of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Richard James Pinniger is duly elected as councillor for said ward.
I'd just like to say thanks to the team here, really efficient, amazing watching you count, it is my first time, and to the Lib Dem team who got me elected, particularly Paul, Andy and Marg, and just to my wife Sarah, who's watching from home, I know that, and all the residents of St Marx's, who are lovely people. It's been an honour and a pleasure to meet you all over the last three or four weeks of the campaign and I'll be doing my best for you over the next three years. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Battledown Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021. Do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Gavin Caroline Adele, Labour Party, 132. Pemberton Helen Clare, Liberal Democrats, 850. Savage Louis Arthur Ives, the Conservative Party candidate, 1005. Willie Daniel Joseph, Green Party, 185. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, 38. Total number of votes, 2210. The total number of votes recorded represented 46.59% of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Louis Arthur Ives Savage is duly elected as a councillor for said ward.
Thank you all very much. I'm delighted to be re-elected for a third term representing the people of Battledown. It wouldn't have been possible without the fantastic support of my county council colleague, councillor Matt Babbage, and our fantastic, hard-working local MP. We will continue to work collaboratively as a team, putting the interests of the people of Battledown first. Thank you very much.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Hesters Way Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021. Do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Becker Adrian, Green Party, 118. Bride John Malcolm, Labour Party, 105. Coxon Samuel Jacob, Trade Unionist and Socialist Coalition, seven. Flynn Wendy Louise, Liberal Democrats, 619. Halli Laura Elizabeth, the Conservative Party candidate, 515. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, eight. Total number of votes, 1372. The total number of votes recorded represented 27.67% of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Wendy Louise Flynn is duly elected as a councillor for the said ward.
I'd really just like to thank all those who supported me in this election. Exciting things are happening in Hesters Way. The neighbourhood plan is nearing completion and I'm incredibly proud of my community for all the work that they have done on it. The Golden Valley development is on its way and I'm pleased to be able to be a voice for local residents in ensuring it benefits them as it has the potential to do. I've lived in Hesters Way for 25 years. It's my home. It's a privilege to be able to represent it for another four years. Thank you.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the Springbank Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021. Do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Bear Stephen John, Green Party, 104. Johnson Thomas Alister, Labour Party, 132. Simons Paul Robert, the Conservative Party candidate, 427. Williams Suzanne Theresa, Liberal Democrats, 746. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter was entitled to, one. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, 14. Total number of votes, 1424. The total number of votes recorded represented 27.94% of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Suzanne Theresa Williams is duly elected as a councillor for the said ward.
I think I've been here before. Actually, yes, yesterday I was here before. I'd just like to thank everybody that's been involved. My husband's just across the way there, my colleague Peter Jeffries and everybody else, and also my dog who's been walking around with me, picking up litter and knocking on doors as well. So, it's all been fantastic. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
I, Paul Jones, being the Returning Officer at the election of a councillor for the All Saints Ward of the Borough of Cheltenham, held on the 6th of May 2021. Do hereby give notice that the number of votes recorded for each candidate at the said election is as follows. Clark Barbara Anne, Liberal Democrats, 798. Godwin Susan Mary, the Conservative Party candidate, 508. Lang Isabel Amy, Labour Party, 129. West Jessica, Green Party, 271. The number of ballot papers rejected was as follows. Voting for more candidates than voter was entitled to, one. Unmarked or void for uncertainty, 14. Total number of votes, 1721. The total number of votes recorded represented 40.29% of the registered electors. And I do hereby declare that the said Barbara Anne Clark is duly elected as a councillor for the said ward.
Thank you very much to the Returning Officer and the staff here, working under difficult circumstances, to all the wonderful residents of All Saints Ward, I'm very lucky to be working hard for you, and to the people who've supported me all the way through, my husband, Peter, the very quiet and enormously supportive Steve Jordan, Rowena Hay, Colin Hay and Marg. Thank you very much.
So, I wholly appreciate there is still one count going on in respect of one of the parishes, but in terms of the borough elections, that, as they say, is a wrap for today and I look forward to welcoming many of you back on Monday. I personally would like to say thank you to all the staff today for their efforts, both speed and accuracy. Most importantly, I would like to thank Kim Smith and her team, Sophie, Karen and Tracy and so many more, because without their dedication, literally working around the clock, none of this would have been possible. I've personally had the benefit of seeing the preparation behind the scenes, a year of planning in what I am sure will go down as the most surreal election in my time as Returning Officer. I've heard it said already about Team Cheltenham, we at Team Cheltenham, Cheltenham Borough Council are privileged to have such a dedicated team and I am truly honoured to be a small part of it. They make my job so easy. So, thank you all and see you Monday.